Thank you. Good evening, councillors, members of the gallery and our viewers watching livestream in tonight's meeting, sorry. My name is councillor Lina Messina, I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and I'll be the chairperson of tonight's planning meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you all to tonight's meeting and I declare the meeting open at 6:32pm. Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wurundjeri Warung people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters we now call Darabben and pays respects to their eldest, past, present and emerging. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognises and pays tribute to diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing of the community has and will always be a paramount consideration of this council. Council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing based on the health of our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be open to the public in line with current health restrictions. This meeting is being livestreamed and via the link on the council website so that the public will be able to view the proceedings of the meeting. The meeting is also being recorded and we've made available on the council website as soon as practical after the meeting. At Darabben, we're proud ourselves on being progressive and contemporary council in the interest of demonstrating leadership. I have high expectations that we'll be respectful throughout our conduct in the debate this evening. Chamber is both a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure that the working environment, the public forums are safe for everyone, both emotionally as well as physically. Ivan, number one, membership. Before we commence, I'd like to introduce the councillors in attendance this evening. We have councillor Trent McCarthy, the deputy mayor.
Good evening, mayor and everyone.
Councillor, good evening. Councillor Emily Demetriades.
Good evening, mayor and everyone.
Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, everyone.
Councillor Tom Hannon.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, everyone.
Councillor Tim Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor Messina and good evening to everyone.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening, Mayor Messina and all.
Councillor Susan Rennie.
Good evening, all.
I'd like to note that councillor Williams is currently in apology. I'd like to introduce officers in attendance tonight. We have Vanessa Petrie, the acting general manager of city sustainability and strategy, and this is your first meeting, welcome. Catherine Power, manager of city development. And we have Jackie Payne, acting priority development coordinator. Now, I understand we have another officer in the meeting. Marisha Hamilton, is that correct? Good evening. Okay, let's get it underway. Councillors and officers, councillors and officers, are there any disclosures of conflict of interest to declare? No? Great. Can I move on to item number four, which is confirmation of minutes of the previous meetings? Can I please have a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the planning committee held on the 14th of June 2022? Moved by councillor Greco, seconded by councillor McCarthy. All those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Councillors, the next item is number five, consideration reports. Item number 5.1 is the application of a planning permit, D7102021-169 to 171 Gower Street, Preston. This matter now relates to officers providing a presentation.
So this report concerns a proposal for 10 dwellings, four of which are double-storey and six which are triple-storey and an associated basement car park. The site is located at 169 to 171 Gower Street. The proposal has a garden area of 48% where a 35% site coverage is required under the general residential zone. Notification was given and there were 17 objections to the application, key grounds of objection related to neighbourhood character, scale of the proposal, overshadowing and amenity impacts on adjoining properties. A response to the objections is contained in the main body of the report. The proposal is generally consistent with the objections and standards of clause 55 of the Darabben Planning Scheme. Subject to minor variations in relation to standard B3, which is dwelling diversity, standard B28, private open space objective and standard B29, sole access to the open space objective. The proposed design response is one which respects the existing character of the area in relation to scale, space in between buildings, roof form and a robust yet sympathetic materiality as well as overall height and street scape presentation. Accordingly, it's recommended to support the proposal and issue an NOD to grant a planning permit, subject to conditions.
Are there any questions to the officers, councillors? No questions? Councillors, we have three submitters this evening who wish to address the planning committee meeting tonight. We have Matthew Del Santo, who's the applicant, Jason Dan, who's the objector, and Ashley Simmons, who's the objector also. Good evening and welcome, members of the gallery. Is Matthew Del Santo here? Matthew, good evening and welcome. Thank you, Matthews. Just so you're aware, you'll have three minutes to address the chamber and there'll be a clock. That'll give you the time, yep.
Just testing that, there we go. Good evening, councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in favour of this application. I'm presenting tonight on behalf of myself and my partner Chris, who is overseas at the moment for work. We are two young professionals who are locals to the city of Darabben Council and are proud owners of this property. We have a deep affiliation with the area as we have both grown up in the council as well as had parents and grandparents who are long-term residents. We work in the construction industry and have chosen to undertake this project because we want to raise the minimum standard of townhouses in Darabben and be on the townhouses that we intend to live in. The subject site is unique for Preston and Gower Street, has an area of 960 metres squared and made up of two property titles. The size of the property and the use of the basement car park facility is why we are able to comfortably achieve 10 dwellings on the site with the design complying with objectives and standards of clause 55 and relevant assessment tools in the Darabben Planning Scheme. The building has been designed to incorporate council's most recent design guidelines for townhouses. Houses have good internal space with adequately sized living areas and bedrooms and functional outdoor common areas with landscaping design by Jack Mello. There is a high level of vegetation to the street as well as neighbours' boundaries. We have incorporated significant ESD initiatives into this project from the beginning. This project achieves best excellence and standard practice is to achieve the best benchmark. This was not a request by council, rather, we believe this was necessary to develop responsibly and it is what our generation are looking for in the houses they live in. We often talk with friends our age about how we want the suburban life but we've been priced out of suburbs. We grew up in single dwellings, often overpriced and some of the run-of-the-mill apartments and townhouses are not inviting. We're trying to provide a happy balance between affordability and good internal and external amenity. Affordability is achieved through smart design, good project management from start to end, which we are dedicated to. We have minimised, we have maintained an open and transparent relationship with our neighbours. Before advertising, information about the project was dropped into letterboxes. Of four immediate neighbours, one chose not to object and we worked closely to ameliorate Harry and Norm's concerns who withdrew their objection. Concerns about the visual bulk and neighbourhood character have been dealt with during more than a year of consultation with the council's planning department. We have over time reduced the scale of the design notably. Setbacks are substantially greater than what is required of standard B17. We've isolated the second floor. In summary, we've worked hard to deal with the neighbours' concerns. We've also championed community affordability and sustainability to form what we think is an exemplary design. Application was internally assessed by council ESD, traffic, urban design, stormwater engineers. We respectfully request, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Is Jason Dan here this evening? Good evening and welcome, Jason. You have three minutes also.
Testing. Thank you, councillors, for the opportunity to speak. My name's Jason, I'm an objector. Just wanted to start by saying I'm not opposed to development in Darabben. I understand that it is part of the evolution of the neighbourhood. But I do think 10 dwellings on 960 square metres covering three stories plus a basement is a little bit excessive. In terms of dwelling diversity, it's really just two-bedroom and three-bedroom dwellings. I understand that there is a, potentially an oversupply of two-bedroom dwellings in the council of Darabben. In terms of what the developers tried to do, there is one two-bedder which is split over three levels and that's the extent of the diversity. In terms of neighbourhood character, neighbourhood precinct E4 is characterised by low-density buildings which creates a sense of openness in the street. My concern is that a development of this size will change that, change that dynamic. In the planner's report, it refers to a preferred future character and that this development sort of is in line with that. I note that at the moment, there's a survey being conducted by Darabben Council which seeks to understand residences' preferred neighbourhood character as well. I filled out that survey today, it closes at, I think, 6 or 8pm tonight. I think 17 people objecting is an early data point which shows that perhaps this scheme isn't in line with what the future or preferred future character that the planner may be alluding to. I also like to sort of mention in terms of affordability, this type of development with a basement car park is actually practically quite expensive to put together. That means developer will seek a certain return and I guess what I'm trying to say is that the market will determine how much is paid, there's no guarantee of affordability. And lastly, I think this sets a dangerous precedent that has the potential to alter the neighbourhood character. It could potentially encourage landowners to think that one dwelling per 100 square metres is appropriate in Preston. I think that this may be appropriate maybe a bit closer in, in Northgate and Thornbury, but we're not quite there yet in Preston and I think a lot of the objectors had a similar view as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you for filling out the survey. Ashley Simmons? Is that correct? Yes, welcome, you also have three minutes.
All right. I don't think it'll take that long, but there we go. Thank you very much for seeing us tonight. So I'm here representing my family from 12 Ovendale Road and the residents from 173 Gower Street in Preston who unfortunately are unable to make it tonight. We oppose this application for development for apartments specifically because the design, even though it may appear to fit in with the neighbourhood's scope, apartments are not aligned with the character of the neighbourhood. The visual bulk and height of the proposed apartments will have major ramifications on the surrounding residents and the flow-on effects on the local community. As Jason said, like, I'm not opposed to any sort of development. Two-story townhouses would be far more appropriate for the area with more land use for outdoor areas that have less of an impact and blend with the streetscape and residential zoning. We find the three-story design to be somewhat excessive as the scale and bulk will dominate the surrounding houses and the neighbourhood. The apartments will be very intrusive to mine and our neighbours' privacy and despite the feedback provided, I haven't seen any change to apply adequate screening to the balconies and windows. I don't think the building provides a good relationship or balance between the existing adjacent buildings and has an immense impact when viewed from adjoining properties. I find the listed building height to be somewhat inaccurate and I don't believe it adheres to the regulations within the Victorian planning provisions. The accuracy of this height has major flow-on implications with the surrounding residents which alters the correct boundary setbacks and shadow castings. There's also no measurements provided for the boundary retaining walls which also affect the setbacks and the shadow castings due to the fence heights. Also, with this tonight, your decisions will have that long-term implications on our neighbourhood as an approval for apartments in the area will be a green light for other developers to build these apartments at the expense of the original family homes, which over time, if they're not maintained, will become faded towers with unmaintained gardens and planer boxes, which then it has a flow-on effect with the parking as it's more convenient to park on the street and rubbish collections from all your private waste collections. That's pretty much where I've got to, so thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Councillors, I don't normally ask, are there any questions to the officers based on the commentary from the objector and the applicants? No? Councillors, do I, oh, councillor Hannon.
Thank you, mayor. I was wondering if we could get a comment on the point that was made about the screening? I noticed there's some requirements for screening in the draft conditions.
So councillor Hannon, is your microphone on?
Ah, can you hear that better? Sorry. I was just wondering if we could get a response about the question of screening, which was raised by our objector. I did find reference to it in the draft recommendations but I'm just not clear about it. Thank you.
Thank you. The condition 1B is a relatively standard condition which relates to all first and second floor habitable room windows or I think it's east and west-facing habitable room windows that need to have either a sill height of 1.7 or external shading or obscure glazing, which is in accordance with the overlooking provisions of the planning scheme.
And I'll just add to Marisha's comment there, they actually have still shown that windows will be treated as well. So the plans do show some level of treatments, particularly use of highlight windows and screening up to 1.7. So they have shown that we just include the condition to make sure that we do sign that off and ensure that every single window is covered. Thank you.
Councillor Greco.
Yeah, I just had a quick question to our officers, just based on what we've heard. Are there examples where, particularly in the Preston and northern end of the city, where we have 10 townhouses located on less than 1,000 square metres? Can our officers give us some indication of whether we have anything like that in the area?
Thank you for the question, councillor Greco, through you, Madam Mayor. Off the top of our head, we haven't prepared a list. What's relevant for the planning assessment here is the policy context as well as the site characteristics. So importantly here, the policy context is an incremental change area. So we have a lower level change area but this is an incremental change area because of its proximity to a train station and other key transport and activity. So in this, in that policy context, we then apply a consideration of the site's attributes, including an assessment against clause 55, which we've talked about, and neighbourhood character. And on balance of those things in this, in this policy context, the three-story townhouse style that they've gone for in this context is acceptable. So it's not so much from the planning perspective, looking at, you know, what's normal on the 1,000 or 960 square metres, it's looking at the policy context and then, and then the attributes of the site and compliance with clause 55. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, councillors? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to move a recommendation with a slight amendment. I'll ask that the staff put that up on the screen and it just goes to the waste management. So colleagues, this is just to clarify that we would expect this to meet the best practice in terms of separate waste collection for fogo and glass.
Can I just confirm that that is your alternate motion? Councillor Rennie?
Yes, that's correct.
Do I have a second, or? Councillor Lawrence? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. And look, I will be interested to hear from my colleagues about the debate on this one because I acknowledge that 10 sounds like a lot on a block this size. I'd like to thank both the objectors and the applicant for coming to talk to us about this development tonight. Ultimately, I've come down after spending quite some time looking at the plans on the side of feeling that this development should be supported by council and I'll briefly outline the reasons for that. One of the things I think is an asset to this development is the basement car park. It's the willingness of the applicant to put in place a basement car park which removes cars from the ground level of the development, which is what actually enables a high yield to be achieved. We could say, no, it has to be seven, it has to be six, and what would come back to us would no doubt be a development that had a lot of car parking on the ground floor. That's actually not a desirable urban design outcome because it takes up space that could be used for landscaping for cars. The other thing I've looked at is the setback lines. So in terms of the size of the built form, on the diagrams in front of us, it has clear lines of sight that show where the setbacks can be. If, for example, we look at the rear setback, we can actually see that in terms of building bulk, the development could have been more expansive and that's the case on a number of sides. So if someone had purchased this block and decided to build an absolutely enormous house, they could have actually built an absolutely enormous house that was bigger in bulk and size than this and they wouldn't need a planning permit, they would only need a building permit. And so if the objection is to the bulk, then I think it's worth keeping in mind that there would be nothing stopping this bulk without even having a planning permit if it was a single dwelling. So I've talked about the setbacks. I think that, you know, we do know that there's significant demand in the area for family homes and, you know, half of these are three-bedroom dwellings. There's three-bedroom dwellings at a number of different size points, which means they'll be at different cost points. I've no doubt any new housing is still going to be expensive but it's going to be a lot cheaper for a family that's looking for a three-bedroom home in this area than buying a three-bedroom home on their own block of land. And, you know, we've also heard and seen that there are, there has been a lot of thought in terms of the sustainability components of this dwelling, which is not the case that we see in all. So on balance, I think this should be supported and, you know, I will be interested, as I said, to hear from people and I don't want in any way to dismiss the concerns of
Ten seconds.
the objectors who have come tonight. But I think it's worth noting that just a short distance from here on Gower Street, we do see a development which I think is, in many respects, quite similar, a townhouse-type development, just 100 metres up the road. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. Yeah, look, I've been looking at this application for a while and admittedly, being in the area for a long time, many decades, I am aware that the current neighbourhood character is actually fairly intact along Gower Street and that remain, that section of Gower Street, as opposed to other sections of Gower Street, remains free from intensification at the moment. But as has been pointed out, the zoning itself, it's not residential two, it's not residential one, it's just residential zone. It's obviously not a growth zone like we have on Broadway or other places because it's not a major carriage fare. But I think we do have to have a commitment to intensifying the housing stock, especially around what is still very close to the CBD, Gower Street, and it will allow families to come in who, and enjoy the Preston Secondary School. So I think that is important because in the future, the price of land in Preston is going to really be prohibitive for any families buying homes. So I think we do have to embrace some of these changes on these areas and also to get quality, quality outcomes for family homes there too.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Can, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Messina.
Thank you, councillor Greco.
Look, I'll be speaking against this proposal and I've been swayed tonight, I think, by what I've heard from, from the objectors. And I really appreciate that the, that the developer has gone some way in terms of, particularly as was mentioned by councillor Rennie, in relation to the underground car parking. We don't see that at all, if you like, basically in the Preston and northern area of our city. So that's, that's a good development and also the other considerations that the developer has put forward. But I'm concerned about the, the visual bulk and also leading off from the question that I asked about that perhaps it's a, it could be an overdevelopment. The area that we're talking about is less than 1,000 square metres. We often see four, six, you know, dwellings on, on that allotment of land, which then gives enough open space and, and enough sort of amenity to the people that live in, in those sort of dwellings on those sites. I appreciate that there's incremental change in zone, area, and, but I think that what is being proposed perhaps goes a little bit too far in relation to placing 10 dwellings on that site and, as we heard from the objectors, basically 100 square metres for each dwelling. So I would see that a more reasonable approach would be to have perhaps six to eight dwellings on that property, which will create
Ten seconds.
which will have a better response to the, to the land and, and therefore on balance, I think that it's not supportable and that I think that the developer could, could adjust their proposal in order to make it better suit the neighbourhood character and also reduce the bulk
Thank you.
that this property represents. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? No? Councillors, I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannon, councillor McCarthy, councillor Demetriades, councillor Messina, councillor Newton, councillor Lawrence, councillor Rennie. All those against? That's councillor Greco. That motion's been carried. The planning committee has decided to support the application and issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit, subject to conditions. This decision is not final, an objector can appeal to the decision and the applicant can appeal any conditions at VCAT. The process of the appeal is subject to timeframes. Details on the documentation to be sent to the objector and to the applicant. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening. Item number six, other business. Item 6.1, general planning information scheduled to VCAT applications. Councillor, is there a move of the recommendation? Moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Rennie. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Item number seven, consideration of reports considered confidential. Councillors, we have one confidential report to be considered this evening. It's 7.1, 30 St George's Road, Preston, state government intervention. Closing of the meeting in accordance of section 66.2, the local government act 2020, council may resolve to close the meeting to the members of the public to consider the item designated confidential by the chief executive officer in accordance with section 3.1 of the act. Councillor, is there a move of the recommendation? Moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Rennie. All those in favour? That's been carried. Thank you. I declare that the meeting be closed at 6... Just check my clock. Sorry, just got to check the time. 7.03pm? Can I please have some confirmation when the live streaming is ceased?